Calling the meeting to order at 6:03 PM. This is the Board of Directors' regular school board meeting for Monday, July 22, 2024. Welcome to all of our visitors, guests and media. It's gonna start tonight with the Board and Administrative Role Calls. Mr. Felth, here. Mr. Burns?
Here.
Ms. Danielson?
Here.
Ms. Schultz?
Here.
Ms. Getzko?
Here.
Ms. Nathan?
Here.
Mr. O'Neal?
Here.
And Mr. Schuler?
Here.
And that is all we have for our Board and Administrative Role Calls. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've had no public comments prior to the start of the meeting, so we're gonna move right on to our first action item, a motion to approve the agenda and addendums.
So moved.
Second.
Who was that? Have a motion made by Ms. Danielson, second by Ms. Nathan. Any further discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carries. Item three, the consent agenda, which includes the school board minutes from June 24, 2024, the personnel consent agenda, and the business consent agenda.
Move approval.
I have a question.
Oh, yes.
Did we get a JV soccer coach that should be on the Personnel Committee? Or on the Personal Consent Agenda?
Not brought to my desk yet.
Okay. There's been chatter, so I was just...
That just means that they probably don't have their paperwork done, and they need to work with the HR specialist to get a certain length or, you know, into the process. It might also be because, July, a lot of the admin team is gone.
Okay.
So everyone could be part of the holdup process.
I'll check with the Director tomorrow. I know he was in today, but again, I haven't seen any paperwork, so...
Thank you.
Because employees are allowed to move forward without our consent, correct? Like, they can...
Yes.
I mean, because the season will start before working...
Right. Background check, and everything has to be in two before we finalize any hiring, but yes, essentially.
Okay. That was my concern.
Probation.
Yeah.
So you're saying we don't have to wait till August, is what you're... If that's what you're saying?
Yeah, that's what I was asking. Right, like, they can start the season before we actually give our statement.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
I didn't know if that was...
Any further discussions on the consent agenda?
I didn't get a second.
Well, I didn't get a second. We got a motion by Mr. Burns.
I'll give a second.
I wasn't getting there.
Oh. I wasn't gonna give you a turn. I was going for it.
Have a motion made by Mr. Burns, second by Ms. Getzko. Any further questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carries.
I'm so late, just takes over.
There are no recognitions. Presentations or showcases this month. Also, the admin team gets the month off. So moving on to item five, which are our action items. Item A, the acknowledgement of donation, contributions, and fundraising. Mr. Schuler.
Mr. Chair, tonight, we have six donors who'd like to recognize, some are multiple donations to different groups. We'll start with the American Legion Post 121. A donation to the Performing Arts Center for $500. Again, just to support the PAC for ongoing expenses and such, so a nice donation there. Peasants Forever donated to the Trap Team. $1,750 for Trap Team supplies. Again, very nice. Watertown Lions to the Watertown Mayor Elementary Library at the amount of $2,000 for books, resources, materials, in addition to what they already have. Watertown Lions, again, Summer Youth Theater, $3,000, and that performance will be starting this week, Thursday. Watertown Lions, again, Industrial Tech, for $1,500 for supplies and materials. And then the American Legion Post to the Industrial Tech Program for $2,500, repair and equipment replacement. There's a router, I believe, that Tim had asked for, and received a nice sizable donation for that. That is all.
Move approval.
Sorry. Motion made by Mr. O'Neal, second by Mr. Burns. Any further discussion? Here, oh, go ahead.
I'd just be curious to see how much the Lions has contributed to the school district this year, because I feel like it's been significant.
Hasn't it been? Yeah, I would agree. That's a good point.
I would have that information. I can gather that and send that out to Nina.
We'll put that on the Friday update.
And actually, the Legion also. I think those two organizations have really done an excellent job of supporting our school.
Very supportive, thank you. Good point.
Might be worth us sending out a thank you letter just to you.
Each of these people on these get a personalized letter from Mr. Schuler, also helps them for tax purposes.
Perfect.
All right, any further questions, comments? You know, and I just wanna say thanks for everyone for always donating, you know, whether it's the Lions or the Post. We've gotten a lot of donations this last year, and it's helped us out a lot, so thank you to everybody again. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carries. Item B, first and only reading of district policies requiring review. Mr. Schuler.
Mr. Chair, the Policy Committee met last week along with Mrs. Hewin and myself. We went through our first and only read. As you can see, there's a number of policies that did receive some minor reference changes through legislative changes this past May. Some are also in our updated series for this month. So the ones that you see in front of you for this first part are, again, we're asking for a first and only read.
And those ones are non-substantial changes?
Correct.
More referencing minor red lines?
Correct.
I'll make a motion to approve the first and only reading of the policies as presented.
I'll second.
Motion made by Ms. Getzko, second by Ms. Schultz. Any further discussion on the first readings? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carries. Item C, the first reading of district policies requiring review. Mr. Schuler.
Mr. Chair, this next group is going to require a second review, but I'll just give you a quick overview of some of our discussion within the policy group and amongst our administrators. Again, as we mentioned, our administrators typically are a little bit in and out of the buildings in July, so we haven't had a firm opportunity to wrap some of these up. So we're gonna wait till August to do that. But it also gives us some time just to work through these a little bit deeper. So Policy 503, some of the bigger changes there really talk more about what is excused and what is unexcused absences. It gets into a little deeper dive on truancy and what that means. And then it also asks for this 503A addendum, and that, again, speaks to a little bit more specifically locally what we do in terms of our procedures at each building. So as you click on that, and I have it up here as well, you can see in yellow what MSBA recommends, and then in green what our interpretation is at our district level. So this, again, is in our handbooks, but the MSBA asked to put that as an addendum to Policy 503. So, again, just working with the principles to make sure that's accurate. I've heard from two out of the three that it's good to go. I'm just waiting for one more to confirm that. Moving down to 509, that's enrollment of non-resident students. This one just takes a little bit more language in terms of students that are in preschool, that happen to be like in your early childhood special ed programs. It gives some more specific language to... Basically, you can't discriminate against them, and it does recommend that they potentially stay in your district if they're screened and gone through the evaluation process. Some districts, you know, would hold back and not allow that non-resident to come into kindergarten. What they're basically saying is, yes, we are allowing that to happen, and it certainly should happen if they're screened in your district and they've received services in your district. So just giving a little bit more weight to that. Moving down, school-sponsored student publications and activities. Again, just give some protections to students in a school newspaper and what they can and can't say. Obviously, a lot of this is screened by the editorial side, the teacher, the principal. We don't have an official early public... High school newspaper, so to speak. But, again, for the most part, this really gives some clear guidelines on what they can and can't say, and some freedom of speech pieces there in school-sponsored material. Let's work through that.
Does that... Can I just have a question? Does that include social media stuff, or is that very specific to...
Social media, too.
I believe it is included as a part of that as well.
And do we have... I'm assuming we have a list of what we consider is official school versus...
Yeah, I don't think we have students on any of our official social media sites.
The only situation would be is if I ever got an intern. And so I did have an intern for like a quarter last year, and so there were very specific things that, like, basically, anything they would create, I had to have approval. It went through an approval process. I had to look at it before it went live. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So now, that's something we already were doing. This is a policy that specifically addresses if that would happen again.
Thank you. 516 is student medication and telehealth. Telehealth is new. Obviously, in the world that we live in, that's becoming much more popular. This also, as you can see, telehealth is... The wording is actually new. This one really specifies some of the things you have to provide for students in terms of a space. If they're receiving a telehealth, mental health conference, for example, you have to allow that time. It's excused with parent permission, obviously, if they're under 18, and then just going through that process of giving them that time and that space. That was the main piece on that one. Is there anything else? I don't know, Policy Committee, feel free to weigh in, too.
That one, I just... My question that I brought up on that one was, because it says telehealth in the, like, title, but really, when it breaks it down, it's only talking about mental, like, um...
So they're...
Mental telehealth, um...
Not like virtual...
Yeah. So I just was wondering if it needed to...
To be broader.
The title needed to be reworded to just only talk about, you know, mental health calls? Or is it really any telehealth call? Because, you know, you could have a sore throat or a cough, you know, a runny nose, and you can do a telehealth call for that. So just, I felt like we needed to be...
A lot of dermatology is now telehealth visits.
I think, yeah, just with the real big focus on student mental health, that this was a push-up to legislature this year to allow that time and to step away from your class to get that support.
But was it specific to mental health only?
In the policy, it is.
This time, the policies, yeah.
But the title suggests, to me, any telehealth, so...
And I do have that noted in the...
Yeah. It is a little confusing, I would agree. Okay, Internet Technology and Cell Phone Acceptable Use and Safety Policy. The big piece there is that last part. Cell phone got added to that policy. In the past, it was Internet Technology Acceptable Use and Safety. So cellphone is new. And as you recall, the legislature, again, they are asking school districts, public schools, to be a little bit more strict on that usage. So that is built into this policy as well as our student handbooks in terms of use at each specific building and what that looks like. Our principals have taken a look at that and have, I think, finalized where they're at. Obviously, the middle school, I think, last year took a little deeper dive with the cellphone usage. Like, high school's starting to ramp it up and going into next year. Elementary, the biggest thing is these, these eye watches, and they're trying to wrap their hand around that. A parent will... They'll get a student who gets upset and something on the playground, maybe a little argument, and guess who they're calling? And they're calling mom or dad, saying, "I got into a little argument and I got in trouble." And, you know, and so then you got a parent calling, "What happened? What happened?" So they're trying to figure out how they're gonna do that. And I think that's not just here. It's a lot of places right now with the uses of these watches, so... But, yeah, it's certainly enforceable. Teachers are the biggest piece of that enforcement, and obviously, staying consistent is the hardest part with that. So we'll keep working on that. Library materials, again, a few changes there, just getting more specific into the process they use in selecting those. If you remember, we went through this last year at a pretty... Pretty intense dive, if you will. And it just highlights that in the green on this policy is what the work we did last year. So this was added, and if you remember, Mr. View, myself, and some of our policy members went through this. And so it's just getting it updated again to the latest and greatest. And there's some laws and some changes in statute regarding library media specialists and what that entails, so... Looking through that, and then, I think we're almost there. Oh, early entrance, excuse me, into kindergarten. This is a local policy specific to Watertown Mayor. I think this is pretty much gonna be where we're at, but I just wanted Ms. O'Connell to take one last look. This is a process that we've used for a number of years, I think, previous even to Ms. O'Connell, but it is a process that we use for a child who's not five on September 1st to go through a process if they want to early enter into kindergarten. Obviously, parents are facilitating that, but it outlines that pretty clearly. And then lastly, Policy 608 is instructional services with special education. There was just a big change in terms of moving that from birth to sixth to age seven now. So that's one more year in terms of that early childhood qualification, so change there. Any questions or anything that I missed, Policy Committee?
And these all come back next month.
They will come next month back.
Once I get... Once I get buttoned up.
Yeah, and they're all very close. It's just a matter of, again, I want principals to be able to weigh in. And again, thank you to Ms. Hewin, it's a big lift this month, and the Policy Committee for working through those.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of district policies requiring review.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Felth, seconded by Ms. Schultz. Any further discussion on those policies? Thank you for the deep dive on those, Darren. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carries. Item D, the approval of the 24-25 district calendar, the updated district calendar. Mr. Schuler.
Mr. Chair and Board, we're asking tonight to modify the current approved calendar that you approved back in January, February-ish last year. What came out of the legislature was an opportunity. Legislation was changed to allow for one year and one year only, right, at this point, elementaries to have an additional PD day. And what they're recognizing is that through all the work we've talked about with the READ Act, the Science of Reading, they realize that elementaries specifically have been hit hard. And I think what they're saying is, districts, you can take a student contact day and substitute that out for a professional development day. So what we're asking today, and I don't know if you saw in my Friday update, the proposal that the elementary put out. Their leadership team met in the spring. They put together a really strong proposal on what they're gonna do on that day. A lot of it's tied to literacy and, obviously, the science of reading work that they're doing. But it is asking, you know, to take one student contact day away. We still meet the minimum hours and minute requirements for an elementary student, so we're not in jeopardy there. So the day we're proposing is October 16th, was the Wednesday of MEA Week. We wanted it earlier in the year so that we get the benefit of the PD, the rest of the school year, if you will. Obviously, it's a two-day week for the elementary students. Middle school, high school would still come to school, regular day for them. Elementary students would stay home.
Or they're not gonna be happy.
So that is their proposal. We wanna get this in front of you today just so that we can adapt the calendar and make the changes and let parents know, obviously, as soon as we can on that change, so...
My only question is, were the other PD days already accounted for? Like, did we already have set things that the staff was supposed to, like, highlight or learn or do that day that we couldn't already utilize one of our current?
Yeah, so, good question. As we've talked about, the letters training for the elementary has been the biggest lift where they've continued that. Now they're on Level 2 training for letters. So most of their days this year are booked with that training. So there really isn't additional time to do other things as they've outlined in their proposal. So to your question, yeah, they're full already, the days that we have allotted in August and certainly throughout the year, but...
I just assume that's a question that will come up, I mean...
Yeah. I think if we really state our case, and if people have been listening, hopefully, they realize the amount of time that we put in. Like, I've talked about before, I think I've used the word unprecedented in terms of the PD that, especially elementary, has been hit with and is part of this new requirement, so... I'm not one, and to be honest, I'm not one to give up a student contact date, but I really do see the value in this, in a one-year thing, just because, again, I think we need to recognize, especially, and all our teachers, but certainly, elementary's put on a pretty heavy left, if you will.
My other question is, is that all the elementary school staff is focusing on is letters training and PLA work? Or is there other, like, professional development things that they're doing so that we're not missing out? Because we're just focusing on one thing.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's kind of this date does do, is it kind of extends it a little bit deeper beyond that. I know she talks about some of the literacy work that they're going to be doing, some things with collaborative learning, and, again, with that whole goal of improving student outcomes. And just maybe stepping away a little bit more from the letters training and work that they're doing on most PD days right now, so...
And is this something we have to get buy-in from the union?
Yeah, that's a good question, too. Yep, we have run it by Education, Minnesota, Watertown Mayor Group. That's a... They took it to their executive board. They looked at it, they know the legislation. Sent that to them as well, and they're on board with allowing elementary. Because, yeah, good point. I mean, we have middle school and high school teachers saying, "Well, what about us?" But I think even at that level, they've realized that the work that that elementary crew has done, so...
The legislation didn't give them the option.
No, it didn't.
Any further questions on the calendar?
Uh, my only... So just thinking about it, is since fifth grade is at the middle school, are they, I mean, because wouldn't most elementary schools go like a K through 5? So are they fifth grade included in this or not? Is it just because it's school-specific, I mean, building-specific?
It said elementary, so we've kept it to K4.
Okay.
Fifth grade has not been a part of the letters training, so...
Got it.
That's probably why.
There's no... Maybe they... Question or ask it?
Anything else?
Good questions.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the 24-25 updated district calendar.
I'll second.
Motion made by Ms. Nathan, second by Ms. Danielson. Any further discussion on the calendar update? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carries. Item E, fiscal year '24 food service pricing. Mr. Schuler.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have just updated, as we do annually, our prices for lunch and breakfast. You can see there, very minimal changes. We went up 10 cents in the adult side. Heather, correct me if I'm wrong there. 10 cents on the, excuse me, on the milk side, and I think...
Milk, milk, station.
That's at 60.
Five cents on lunch, 10 cents on breakfast.
10 cents on breakfast, yeah. Thank you.
And that goes to second meals?
Yes.
And adults. So just to clarify, the first meal again is free. If they choose to get a second full meal, that's the charge, that's the price that they would be charged.
I'm ready to discuss. I have a question.
Go for it.
It always says that they can only get milk for free if they have a full meal.
That's correct.
Well, why? I mean, that sometimes, milk is better than.
I think, I think that's above us, unfortunately.
Is it really?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
There was, there, I think there used to be a program where can of burners got free milk for.
There was a point in time for that as well.
Just can of burners got free milk, no matter what, but I don't know if it was for a snack, but that went away, and so now, this is the, yeah. So if you have a home meal, when you get a milk, then charge that to the, the, the card. You're okay.
Yeah, I wanna say it's the Department of Education that makes you do that. It might even be higher than that, uh, at the Fed level, but I'll check. These prices, again, are the minimum prices, um, that M D E puts out, and we did confirm this with Tahoe, and they were okay with these prices, so.
Do we have any idea how many kids get second meals versus?
We could probably run a report to find that out.
Just more, more curious, I, you know, maybe at some point if we get Tahoe in for a.
Honestly, since I'm also the lunch lady. It's a lot more, second entrees, second size, um.
Another slice of pizza, whatever.
Yep, in order to qualify for a full lunch, it has to have so many elements of different food groups, we consider it as a full meal. Now, um, our food service staff do an excellent job of, like, redirecting students, saying, okay, you're gonna do that, do you, you know, you've got two and the three, do you really, you know, so they do a very nice job, kind of guiding, especially at that middle school level, when they're just heading that transition on what's what, and even though they're giving a tutorial very specifically to educate them, you know.
And mom and dad see that the lunch account goes down to zero, too? Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so, mu- much, I would say it's much more common to have second entrees and second sides rather than full meals, but it does work.
Okay.
Or buy cookies for all your friends.
Yes. I know some helps, too.
The cookies are so good there now.
You're friends like that.
Even though I put cookies in his lunch every day. Okay.
Any further questions?
No. That's why they need free milk to get back those cookies down.
I make a motion to approve the, uh, fiscal year twenty-four food service pricing.
I'll second. Have a motion made by Ms. Danielson, seconded by Mr. Felth. Any further discussion on the prices? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item F, the tenure status and the granting of said status for the following teachers for last year of twenty-three, twenty-four. Mr. Schuler.
Uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Chair, one of the things that we did a few weeks, or months ago, excuse me, is we approved the, uh, seniority status, the tenure status, if you will, for the twenty-two, twenty-three year. We were a year behind, so we're catching up. Uh, this is the, uh, group of teachers that was tenured, you know, this past school year in twenty-three, twenty-four, so, uh, Amy Alloport, Ashley Denami, Elizabeth Thader, Cassandra Kuntz, Paige Lozart, Jenny Poplar, and Hannah Rosholt are all, um, receiving tenured status in the district. So again, uh, for those, just a quick educational piece, the, um, all these individuals have either completed three consecutive years, um, in their probationary period, and their principals have designated them to move to that tenured status, um, as a teacher. Uh, there are a couple individuals in this group also who are tenured in a previous district and received what you would say a fourth contract, um, and they obviously were tenured in that district. When they come to us, they, um, they get one year of probation, and then they are considered tenured. So again, two of those staff members, um, were coming to us from other districts, already tenured, one year probation with us, um, and then they have now met tenured status here as well.
When do we get that list up?
Seniority list?
Yeah.
Yeah, that will be coming out.
In August.
August, yes, we're.
I couldn't remember what month.
Just doing some fine tuning, rather than comfortable putting it.
We were close this month, but we didn't quite get there.
And then going forward, this is gonna be every July then, I think?
It's our goal, yes.
It's the plan.
I make a motion to approve tenure status.
I'll second.
Motion made by Ms. Danielson, seconded by Ms. Getzko. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. And that ends the action items of the evening. Uh, moving on to the review and information items. The bond referendum project update, also the abatement project update. Mr. Schuler.
Um, this will be primarily, uh, the abatement bond, parking lot and sidewalk project. Um, as you've probably have seen, the, uh, upper lot, the upper west lot of the high school is pretty close to being completed. Um, we are looking at asphalt probably, um, the next day or two to get that, um, pretty much wrapped up, and we'll be ready for the chip seal. Um, also waiting on lighting, um, you've noticed our lighting is not up yet, so that's also, um, we're working with Kilmer on that to get them on site. Um, same with the lower lot, um, most of the curb and sidewalks are complete, um, and again, getting ready for that second layer. Um, the goal there is to have that done with that first base layer of asphalt, um, by Thursday for the play, and we're gonna have a lot of folks coming in. The upper lot will still not be available, um, but we're gonna have everybody come in through that door, one, the lower level, um, but we really want that to be pretty much wrapped up, other than, um, there is some final grading that is being worked on as we speak, and that looks like it's just about done as well, and then seating will happen. Um, so that, those two areas are in, in really good shape. On the other side, the middle school, um, almost all the sidewalk is now in, all the, um, curbing is in. Um, today, they were doing the final grade on some of the, the islands, if you will, and, and getting that prepped. We should start seeing, um, hopefully, some asphalt this week in that area, potentially, um, was, as well as, um, we're hoping for some landscaping, um, and lighting as well. So those two areas are, are getting close, it's looking really good. Um, the other one is the district, excuse me, the elementary, and again, um, front entrance is all back in place now, sidewalks are all in, um, curbing is done, some of the cutouts that were needed to be completed there. They're still waiting, I think, the center island, the bus island, if you will, is not complete yet. Um, sidewalk folks were not here today, so that didn't get done, but, um, we're hoping by the end of the week, that'll be done as well, and then that'll be, um, that first base layer of asphalt as well. Um, things are moving there. C L C is still the building that is behind, um, but the front entry, that door one entry, is, is really in pretty good shape right now, sidewalks are all in, um, some, some landscaping, or excuse me, some final grading is, is getting close there, and then, um, the, the parking stalls, the nine or ten parking stalls that we have there is just about ready for a final curving. Um, they had to put a drain in, um, at the base of that entryway there into those spots, that should be done, I think, this, early next, this week, and then, um, asphalt that area as well. We're not planning on opening that up right away, though, I think that might be just a little bit of a delay until we're truly ready to shut down the other side, the door four, the main parking lot for parents, um, and then once that's done, we'll reopen up door one, or once that gets started, we'll open up door one to start folks coming in that door, um, while door four is shut down and that part not shut down. Still waiting for some materials there and some pricing, um, but I know the, with Bach met last Wednesday, and we started to finalize some of those loose items, if you will, that need to be kind of wrapped up, and getting closer.
Are they still putting in an additional parking lot by the, the pond?
Yeah.
At the high school there, that dirt, yes.
Okay. When is that?
Yeah, it's probably the last thing they do, they're, obviously, they're using it as a storage space, and once they can start moving some stuff offsite, I think they'll free that up. I did see someone out there today, when I left, that they were starting to market, um, so I, I think that's probably getting pretty close. We told them it had to be done for all county.
Okay. Which is end of September, correct?
It is, it is. It won't take them very long, that, there's not a whole, I mean, they gotta dig that little infiltration basin, but there hasn't a whole lot of work there, so it won't take them that long.
Cause it's just some honorable curb and.
Yeah.
Is there some curb going? There will be.
There'll be curb around the outside, and there's a little bit of, of utility drainage infrastructure there with infiltration and whatnot, but like I said, they'll not, you know.
And it's just like they fixed maybe when you're coming in, where the water always collects, like, that area, like, maybe it drains a little better. You know where I'm talking about, right before you hit the stadium, there always seemed to be like a pool.
Oh, that is designed that way, actually.
Is it?
Yeah, that's one of those first.
Like overflow.
Well, it's the first retention pond, it goes there, and then it goes into the big one, so it's kind of that first settles.
No, I mean, in the driveway.
In the driveway.
Like, in the driveway.
A little bad, I'm sorry, I guess I.
Yeah, yeah.
I could see them working in that area.
Yeah, it seemed like they, like, have paved or done something there, so. I don't know, it hasn't rained in a while, and I haven't been there, and I don't know if it really works, but.
No, overall, I think, in, in the high school and middle school district office lots were in, in really good shape. C L C is the one where.
Is most of it going to be done before open houses? Like, is it going to be?
Elementary, middle school, and high school will be.
Okay.
C L C won't be.
Um, just Thursday night, in addition to the, um, summer youth theater, there's alumni soccer for both boys and girls, and they're doing a little tailgating kind of thing. So, there could be a lot of traffic on Thursday night.
Good to know.
And actually, we block off the middle school section.
Yeah.
So people don't drive through that if it's any type of wet cement.
You don't want footprints on there, come on.
I almost had some the other day.
Yep.
Yep.
From the Bach, we're all watching.
Seriously?
It was all taped off with yellow tape.
Oh, yeah, let's go walk through that.
Oh, yeah.
Luckily we stopped. There you go.
Stacy says that happens all the time.
Thank you.
Any further questions on the?
People walk across hot asphalt that was just laid down.
Oh, uh, the middle school flooring is all completed, right?
Yes, other than the base trim is not.
Oh, some of the base trim.
Not there yet, but, um.
Middle school flooring is.
Oh.
Flooring looks great, yeah, it, uh, it's getting that first coat of wax now, which we haven't been able to do for a few years. Monolium wasn't supposed to be waxed, so this V C T can be waxed, and it really shines as we, if, look, even on our district.
It's shiny!
You gonna inform some of us? No, I'm just kidding. But no.
I'll send it to partner one.
It's, uh, it looks very nice, so, again, custodial staff is very excited to be able to have nice workable floors again.
And locker room is complete?
Uh, yep, uh, boy locker room is complete, and, uh, they can probably share some pictures of that here.
What are you guys gonna do with all your time?
Now I'm. All right, stop right there.
So, if, from the Bach side, we're, we're starting to really wind out on a lot of the bond projects now, that we got the flooring kind of behind us, it's just some minor punch list items, I think, from my understanding.
From all the active bond projects, yeah.
Yeah, and then it's just trying to, to regroup to figure out where we're at with everything, so. Hopefully more to come, but hopefully not as much as we've had.
Yeah, there's a little bit of money in the original bond yet, so.
Is there?
We're getting all the dust to settle on all the projects, get them all done.
Yep.
And then, once that's finished, then we'll look at the L T F M list and see what we should spend the remaining money on.
Nice. So, well, that's great, I mean, it's amazing how much we got done out of that bond, I mean, really, way more than we were expecting.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions on the construction projects? All right, moving on, item B, Darren, the twenty-twenty-eight strategic plan survey results.
Uh, I just wanted to spend a little bit of time just walking through some of the survey results. Um, again, um, I shared this in my, um, performance goals and just, uh, as the broader survey, so you had a chance to maybe walk through some of that. Uh, what I tried to do is hit some highlights and maybe some areas that we need to continue to improve, um, so again, feel free to ask questions. Um, one of the things, um, from an employee-staff standpoint, we had ninety-five respondents this year, which is just a little bit less, I think we had a hundred and five last year. So, um, these are some areas that I thought were to celebrate, and some areas, again, to keep working toward. So, um, of the employees, ninety-four percent agree or strongly agree that they would recommend to a parent to select Watertown Public Schools, Watertown Air Public Schools for their child. So that was, was pretty impressive. Um, ninety percent agree or strongly agree that the fellow staff member demonstrates a concern for their welfare, so the feeling that they've got someone to look out for them on their staff was, was, is pretty impressive. Um, eighty-four percent agree or strongly agree that they would recommend a friend or family member to work here. That one was a little concerning, uh, in my mind, and, and I think that's one where I'd like to do a little deeper dive, um, even myself, in terms of, um, I do these rounding things, I haven't done them the last couple of years, where it's just a matter of asking a staff member, hey, send them an email, do you have like ten minutes you can just give me, I just wanna do some rounding, and it's basically just asking a few questions, what's working well, what's not working well, and then even bringing that question up, you know, and, and seeing if we get her, some feedback on that, but.
When, when was this, remind me, when was this survey sent to employees and staff?
Yeah, it was, uh, early May, uh, we tried to target early May for sending that out, so.
Okay, cause that was right around the time we were talking about cuts, too.
Yeah.
So, that, there may be some of that in there as well, but yes, I think that rounding is a great idea.
But I, I think the same is true with the first one, right?
Mm-hmm.
I'd like, I'd just be curious on, why wouldn't they? As a staff member?
Right.
You know?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Now, you gotta remember, staff members are cooks, custodians, office staff, it could be anybody, so.
Right.
We don't know where, what specific group we're talking about.
Yeah, I just. The reason why I say that is I think that even if it's a custodian or a food service worker, I mean, if they, you know, do they get the same information about the success our school has, or the opportunities, or, you know, do they just see kind of behaviors only and no, don't really understand the value that we bring to our community? I just, I'd love to see that ninety-nine, a hundred on that particular question.
Mm-hmm, yep. Uh, again, employees and staff, um, ninety-four percent agree or strongly agree that their work environment is safe and a healthy place, which is cool. Um, ninety-two agree, percent agree that the, or strongly agree that the superintendent makes decisions that are in the best interest of children in the school district, and then ninety percent strongly, or agree or strongly agree that they're satisfied with their job at the time of the survey. So again, those ten percenters, you know, what's the why there, you know, and I guess that'd be something to dig a little deeper at some point and, and open up a comment section or, or.
Yeah.
A way to track that a little bit closer. Um, parent survey, um, again, only a hundred and four respondents, um, and again, that stuck out to us administratively, you know, what's the why there? Um, last year, we had about, I don't know, two hundred, so not a lot more, but doubled, uh, or went down. Um, and, again, I, I think one of the things we can do a better job is getting it into our, our building newsletters, uh, that did not happen, so when Heather sent it out district wide, um, to all of our parents, that was the one time we sent it out. Could we have sent it out in those other newsletters to see it again? Probably, so we'll, we'll certainly fix that. Um, ninety-one percent agree or strongly agree that they are proud to have a child in the Watertown Mayor School District. Again, that's a pretty nice number. I put V C next to it, that's on our vision card, so as we talked about last year, how do we grade ourselves? That vision card, um, shows that, and that's one of the questions on there. Ninety-six percent agree or strongly agree that their child has a connection with at least one adult in their school, and that brings you really back to those connections that we talk about, that makes us special here at Watertown Mayor, and I think that number is a good testimonial to, um, the connections we make with kids, and parents are seeing that, that's, that's encouraging. Uh, ninety-two percent, um, agree or strongly agree that the communication they receive from the district is relevant, timely, and effective, and again, um, I think Heather and I kind of celebrated that one, I think, that's a, a nice sign of, of people are seeing And again, um, I think Heather and I kinda celebrated that one, I think, that's a, a nice sign of, of people are seeing that the communication is timely, it's relevant, and, and it's making an impact, hopefully. Um, eighty-nine percent of parents agree or strongly agree that teacher, staff, and administrators in the district demonstrate a genuine concern for their child or children. Again, that's on our vision card as well. And then lastly, ninety-three percent agree or strongly agree that superintendent is an effective leader. Uh, for students, um, again, this is third grade through eleventh grade, so it encompasses that, um, age group. Uh, eighty-three percent agree or strongly agree that they feel seen, valued, and heard at school. And that, right, this is a red flag, you know, and kind of what the why was, uh, we've talked about that administratively, and we're gonna address that, I think, at each building to get a deeper dive on why that is. Um, again, we've had questions of even, does a third grader truly understand?
I, I don't think they know what that means, I, I don't, yeah.
So we need to do a better job of clarifying that in our questions of saying, what does that look, feel, and sound like? If, if an adult or someone, you know, hears you.
Yeah.
So I think we need to do a better job at that, in that particular, or change the question.
No.
And then ninety percent agree or strongly agree that they are treated fairly at school by teachers. So again, I think most kids in third and fourth grade probably didn't understand that, but, you know, there are some things there, too. Developmentally, it's hard to gather that. Uh, ninety-five percent agree or strongly agree that they are treated fairly at school by administrators, so they're principals. Ninety-five percent strongly agree or strongly agree that they have at least one classmate who cares about them and wants them to succeed. So that's cool, too, that they're recognizing that they have a peer that does care about them. And that's a big step in wanting to come to school every day, in my mind. And again, always my personal favorite, ninety-two percent, agree or strongly agree that they're proud to be a royal, so, uh, I'll get that to a hundred, too, but, uh, that's, that's pretty neat. Just some really brief takeaways, again, we kept the questions generally the same from year one to year two. Uh, we realized, and I've shared this, that we probably need to revisit the questions, um, in each of our surveys to better define maybe the context of the question being asked, um, is there maybe some ambiguity or discrepancy in how students are interpreting some of the questions, and we, we know that. Um, and then participation rates were down on the parents' survey responses, we have to do a better job of communicating that out, um, via building newsletters and other avenues, um, as well. So, and I think our goal was to do two years of comparative data, and then year three is the year that we kind of revisit all of our questions again. And I think we'll do that, we'll bring it back to, to you as a board, I think, come next spring again, March-April-ish, so, you know, we'll send it out in May again. And again, people have said, well, why don't you send it out the fall, why don't you send it out in the spring? I mean, there's different ways to look at that, too. Um, I don't know, I think, when you do it in May, you've got a full compilation of a full school year to hopefully wrap your head around. Um, like you said, budget cuts, yeah, probably didn't help the climate, we get that, we understand that, that's um, difficult for staff to go through that, um, and families, too, for that matter. So, there are different parts of this, it's not a perfect, um, look, but it's a, it's a glimpse into how people feel like we're, we're doing here, so. But always open for feedback and looking for ways to improve the process.
When you were talking about, like, the comparatives, was there any between last year and this year that stood out? One, you know, either really, hey, went up by fifteen percent or went down a significant amount?
Yeah, there wasn't enough, it wasn't a lot, I should say, that really swayed one way, either, yeah, either way. Even in the parent one, where we noticed there was a hundred less or so respondents, it stayed very consistent.
Okay.
So, um, I don't know, either the same people took it again literally the next year, because the, the results were very similar. Um, but, yeah, that, that's the big one, I think we just need to get more respondents, and, and certainly staff as well. It's about half of our staff, we're roughly about two hundred and fifteen folks that would have taken, had the opportunity to take the survey, so we're a little under that, but half is pretty good for most surveys, people say, if you get thirty percent, that's a pretty good number. Um, so. And what I do, too, is I share this, uh, with staff, um, at our opening workshop. Um, my presentation is usually a little synopsis of this, too, to say, here's how we're doing, you know, if people are telling us. So, um, gives the staff an idea, too, of how people are responding, so.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And keeping on the, uh, Mr. Schuler theme, um, administrative, I know, you're doing all the talking.
Right.
Um, the admin report, since you're the only admin we got here.
I'll show her it myself tonight in campus. Um, staffing, uh, we are in middle of July, which means we're over halfway now through the summer months. Um, we talked about the soccer openings, um, hopefully that'll be closed up soon. We have a JV and a middle school girls' soccer, um, openings there. We have food service assistants, uh, two three-hour positions that are out there. Uh, two pair professionals only, which is exciting, because that's always one that we struggle with, uh, this time of the year, so, uh, one in the high school, one in the middle school. Uh, we have one element, excuse me, one middle school special ed teacher in the EBD level, and then one high school special ed teacher in the DCD program that we're missing. So, um, got a little work to do there, uh, those are difficult to find. And when I talk to other superintendents, it's your DCD teachers right now, um, in the special ed world. Um, finance directors is another one, difficult to find, and HR people, people are struggling to find those. School districts are, I mean, talked to larger districts, to our east, the Carver, um, eastern Carver County, and again, uh, can't find an HR person, huge district, well, Konya can't find a business manager. You know, they're outsourcing right now their business manager, uh, position to, to region five. So, that's, that's a concern, um, too. So, um, you know, just let you be aware of that, but those are some of the openings. It's actually, I'm very optimistic, sitting in July, and we're in pretty good shape right now, so that's good. Um, just wanna put on your radar, too, um, I talked a little bit about back-to-school workshop. Um, our kickoff day is a little different this year, we're gonna be on Wednesday, August twenty-eighth. I always invite you, so I'll put it on your calendars now, but, um, it, it, again, it's, um, superintendent address is like at noon that day. Um, we usually go in the morning, but our speaker is coming from Mankato, she can't make it here till afternoon that day, so she'll be speaking, um, after me at twelve-thirty. Um, it's Syndra Kampf, and it's called Beyond Grit, and it's the ten top practices of the world's best. And, and really, it's a, it's a great story, and, and I'll share more as we get a little closer, but I.
She's really good.
You've heard her?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
She's really good.
Yeah, she's worked with, like, Adam Thielen, for example, uh, in, in, in some of his earlier days as a pro. Um, we're als, we're also, it's just a lot of that personal well-being, mindset-changing, um, mentality, so I'd really encourage you, if you have an opportunity to pop in that day, she'll be with us for an hour and a half, and then we're gonna turn it over to the, our athletes, all of our fall athletes and activities, kids are in activities. Uh, we're inviting them in to listen to Syndra, um, from, uh, two fifteen to three fifteen, and then they can go off to their practices for the afternoon, but her message really speaks to goal-setting for, for athletes and kids in activities, earning. You don't have to be an athlete to do that, goal-setting in the classroom, those type of things, so, um, we're excited to have her speak to our kids, too. And then she'll be back in January, at our January P-Day Day, there's another part of our P-Day Day that's getting burned up, cause she's with us that day in the morning, and then in, uh, April, she's back to do another follow, or, excuse me, March, so January, March. So we'll see her three times this year, and continue that follow-up, um, in our buildings as well. Um, kindergarten enrollment, just a quick update there, we're at eighty-four students as of, uh, this morning. Um, that averages out about twenty-one students per class, so four sections, twenty-one students right now. Obviously, not where we wanna be, um, but just a quick update there. Community, uh, community youth theater, we talked about Space Cases, uh, the play, uh, starting on Thursday at seven PM, Thursday, Friday, Saturday at seven PM, and then Sunday at two PM. And then lastly, um, just in that case we didn't mention this, but, um, Bob Dressel, our former buildings and grounds director, his celebration of life is Thursday, if anybody is interested, from eleven to seven PM at the arboretum in Chantilly-Aston, so, um, it's a pretty wide range of times if you can make it, um, but just wanted you to be aware of that as well, so.
I just have a quick question on, um, the opportunity for the fall athletes to come in and hear the speaker. When is that going to be communicated to the fall athletes?
Yeah, I will, uh, check on that, that should be coming out soon, I don't know if the coaches.
A good opportunity probably would be at the cap meeting, cause that's on August twelfth.
Twelve, correct, yep.
So, if Mr. Samansky.
Well, and the thing is, we thought most of them are gonna be available, cause they're gonna be practicing that day, more than likely, although some may be working or something, coming right into practice, but, yeah, well, that's a good point, to get the word out sooner than later.
Anything else for Mr. Schuler?
I thought it was on the, it wasn't on the email from Mrs. Nathan?
That's what I'm looking at right now, so.
In her, like?
Not in the body?
Her letter?
Are you looking for a welcome back name?
Yeah, no.
Okay, so, yeah, well, you guys will work on the communication piece out to the athletes.
How many, um, kindergarten students were we anticipating should be signing up, or what?
Yeah, I think this is probably where we thought we would be. We were hopeful that a hundred number would be more realistic, um, but as we've done a really deep dive, more than I think we've ever done, I mean, we've scratched every surface, we've uncovered every stone, no stones left unturned, if we will. Um, Kayla at the, um, the admin assistant has been fabulous from the get-go. We started this process in January at least, um, and I will say it's not for lack of effort on anyone's part. I mean, it's just, it's a low birth rate year, we know that, um, I think we're seeing it all around. Um, but yeah, it's, it's, it's low, and, uh, for whatever reasons, I'm, yeah.
And only getting lower, too.
Mm-hmm, yep. Yeah, yep.
The cap meeting was in the second email, she had sent two about fall registrations, so it is in here.
Yeah, I thought it might be. Yeah, that would be, cause he does his presentation, Mr. Samansky.
And I know he's put it in, even in the spring, he had it in his, his Friday updates to coaches and, and directors, that this was gonna be happening on that date, so I think coaches probably already know, but students probably don't know.
They don't know.
Opportunity.
Opportunity.
Anything else for Mr. Schuler? Thank you. Um, are there any board member reports from the last month, from any committee meetings?
The foundation has a couple of things going on for Rails to Trails again, so just be on the lookout for that, and obviously their fall fundraising event, so.
Sell more tickets.
Yep.
I have some for you.
Oh.
Um, and just as a reminder, um, filing period begins on the thirtieth, so get your two bucks ready for those of y'all.
When's the end date on that, by the way?
Sixteenth.
Okay.
Thirteen.
Thirteen, yes, sixteen.
I had to go back to the old agenda.
So, come see you on the thirtieth?
Yes, and look for social media prior to that, just because I don't exactly know when we will be for parking and things of that nature, so I may need to pivot a little bit.
The door will be ready.
The door.
Parking lot will be ready. Doors, right.
You'll be able to park in the middle block.
Okay, we will work it out.
No changes.
So that, that, the filing period's from July thirtieth to August thirteenth?
Yes. A lot of people want to withdraw, so let's discuss your birthday date.
Oh, that's a withdraw.
Yeah.
I get back on the eighth.
Um, and also, too, as a reminder, MSBA has their summer session, it's on August fifth, I think you can still register for it. Um, you just don't get the discount, but, so, I will be there. If any of y'all wanna join, that'd be great, if not, understand. That is all I have, anybody else? All right, hearing none, um, I will call a recess before we have a closed session. Um, we can take a recess for five minutes, how about, get up, move around?
Sign paperwork.
Sign paperwork, um, we'll reconvene at right around seven oh eight, seven ten.